You call a meeting to order? Go on the right. Not to keep.
Right here.
Stay standing for a court of legal.
Dear God, our Father in heaven, we ask that you preside over this meeting. Even if we have differences of opinion, give us unity of spirit. Help us each to listen politely as others share their points of view. Help us to work in a unified team combining ideas for a great outcome. Help us to work as a whole rather than individuals trying to promote their own agendas. May we have a spirit of camaraderie in this room and work together in our shared mission. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to call for an executive session to be held on February 16, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Mary Nunn, all favors, and by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same side, motion carried. Do you have any legal claims?
No, nothing.
Committee of your legislative reports, do by.
Thank you, Chairman. I attended the LPC, Legislative Policy Committee, part of CSA. I'm the representative. Every week, we meet during the session to get the update on what's going on and the bills are going through and how it affects us. So far, it's day 20, there have been 1,375 bills posted. That doesn't mean they're all going to pass, hopefully very few will, but that's a lot. But given last year and what happened with COVID and the short session that was expected. Like I said, we're just in the beginning and we're discussing the bills, but I want to just read a short little update on what the Senate budget framework looks like. On Monday, the Senate majority released their first draft budget framework, which includes $450 million in tax cuts and one-time spending. The proposal is recommending a $1.447 billion budget in FY '22. It is unclear specifically which taxes the Senate proposes to cut and by how much, but $200 million is considered ongoing. But the remaining $250 million would be one-time. The budget also includes a one-time $300 million appropriation to pay down debt in PSPRS. That affects us. And, let's see, a budget with a one-time $300 million and an additional $200 million in proposed one-time highway and road projects. That might affect us as well. The Senate plan also includes ongoing relief from Maricopa and Pena Counties in the form of a full repeal of the Arizona Department of General Corrections fee, something missing from the executive budget recommendation. Additional county, this is very important, additional county assistance would be provided by way of increased investment in rural broadband development grants and a proposed $16.1 million to reimburse local jurisdictions for refunds associated with Transwestern Pipeline assignments. That would be very good news. Again, this is just proposed, but we will be lobbying for that as that hit us in our pocketbook severely. And that is my report for today.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. I've attended the CSA telephonic meetings and also the CSA County Supervisors Association Executive Board meetings. And as of this morning, we are preparing a letter to be sent to our members of Congress in regards to the vaccine supplies to our state that are woefully inadequate and constituents across Arizona are not being properly served. So we'll be addressing that in a letter to our members of Congress later today. Thank you.
Thank you. Try to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I telephonically attended the Workforce Development Board meeting where new officers were elected and we heard reports from various economic developers across Mojave and La Paz Counties. Thank you.
Try to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As covered last meeting, Regina Cobb has submitted three water bills, House Bill 2456, House Bill 2595, House Bill 2679. We'll be watching those and supporting those. And I also attended a meeting of the Mojave County Water Authority. Thank you.
Need a motion to approve the January 4th, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Second for the discussion. Mary Nunn, all favors, and by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same side, motion carried. Want to call the public? Chris, Rodarte?
Chris Rodarte, Kingman. President Harry S. Truman, a Democrat, in a special message to the Congress on the internal security of the United States on August 8th, 1950, said these words. "Once a government is committed to the principle of silencing the voice of opposition, it is only one way to go, and that is down the path of increasingly repressive measures until it becomes a source of terror to all its citizens and creates a country where everyone lives in fear. Moving the call to the public back to where it belongs and allowing the public to speak on agenda items before the votes are taken, before you hear our positions and before you decide our destiny is the right thing to do. I applaud you, Mojave County Board of Supervisors, for honoring your constituency with your vote at the January 19th meeting. We, the people, need to know our voices are heard and our wishes heeded. Signing up to speak and being silenced is another thing, which is what happened to me last time. Following the rules, filling out the form, was apparently not enough to get my voice heard. I trust that was an isolated incident and will not recur. The future of America is grim. Our ideas and opinions are being censored and our voices silenced. Since the DHS proclaimed a heightened domestic terrorist threat, patriots like me are on the verge of being deemed violent extremists for exercising our First Amendment freedoms. Now we can look to Mojave County as a bright spot on a dark horizon thanks to this one constitutional nod to our unalienable rights. The three members who voted aye are to be commended for acknowledging we, the people." So thank you again. And oh, by the way, a big thank you from this radical right-wing fringe lunatic for approving Resolution 202117. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Gianluca Zan. I'm a Mojave County resident since 2005. And I could probably have a chance to live everywhere I want, in the country or around the world, but I pick Mojave County and I'm grateful. Especially after the last few weeks, the new events, how this county, the direction is going to, I think there is no better place to be. Even with our imperfections, don't get me wrong, we still have to work on many things, but things here, at least, we have a chance. We have a chance to live still in the country that we're supposed to be living, the country that our founding fathers fought and died for and the principle that inspired this country for many generations. I want to thank specifically the new supervisor, Travis Lingerfelter, sorry for my pronunciation, for joining the team of supervisors that I consider also we, the people. You are not just people that are there, you're one of us. You've always been one of us since the beginning. I see you during the daily life, I see you, the way you behave, the way you've been portraying yourself. Doesn't mean that we agree on everything, every time, but one thing we agree, that you didn't forget you ought. You ought to defend this Constitution. There is no emergency that should supersede our Constitution and our inalienable rights. Too many people have been suffering in this community. It's very sad when I see some unappointed, excuse me, some appointed bureaucrat or county attorney or county manager telling us, or even worse, Health Department Director, telling us to stay home and do not provide to our families because we are not, let's say, essential. We are all essential to our families. That's the bottom line. You get paid by us. The chair where you're sitting on is paid by our very hard-earned tax dollar. And maybe just because, I don't want to say, maybe you forgot sometime, not all of you, of course, but sometime we need to remind her that we are the boss. After all, we're supposed to be the people that we are in control here. Yes, you're elected for a limited time, we delegate these powers, but you cannot treat us like serfs. If you tell me that I can go in some big corporate business like Home Depot or Safeway or other places like that and I'm safe and they're allowed to be open, why the last few months? Many small mom-and-pop businesses like, you know, hair salon, they need to lose their job, lose their business and all their savings. That's really illogical. Like it's illogical, the little piece of plastic that you have between you. I mean, if I was a child, I would still laugh at this. I see tax dollars wasted in this room. I know that those masks that you wear, it's your choice, I respect the choice, but you don't need to be a doctor or a medical health director to read the manufacturer boxes that says, "This piece of cloth from China will not save any of you from viruses," because it's kind of mathematic. Think about a fishnet and think about, you know, like a mosquito. That's the same equation you have, relationship you have with your mask, but that's okay. My point, I came here today is to congratulate all the supervisors that did the right thing. Thank you very much.
Number seven, item 5 through 37, whether you want to be told to by.
Item 10.
None today, thank you.
None today, Mr. Chairman.
None today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll accept the motion to approve item 5 through 37 minus 10.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second for the discussion. Mary Nunn, all favors, and by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same side, motion carried. Item number 10.
Thank you very much. This is a member, an MOU between the Arizona Department of Health Services and Mojave County Department of Public Health about public health data and privacy issues. Is someone here, so I can ask questions from public health? Good morning. So this was, to me, a little difficult to read. Can you explain exactly what this is? Is it to protect privacy or is this give away our people's personal information?
It's to protect privacy of individuals. That's why we go into agreement and it's a signed official agreement. It covers everything from our vital records piece of services to our communicable disease reporting to our nursing services reporting.
Okay, so this is just to protect. It doesn't give the state anything that they didn't get before?
Correct, yes. This has been an item that we've had since 2013 in place and so it's to renew it.
Thank you, just wanted to make sure. And with that, I'll make a motion that we approve item 10.
Second.
We have a motion in the second for the discussion. Mary Nunn, all favors, and by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same side, motion carried. Want to our public hearing? Item number 38, open to public hearing. Send cause property to revert from MX to manufacturing zones to previous AR 36. Anybody from the public which to address the. Mary Nunn, all for the public hearing. That's number four, or motion?
Mr. Chairman? Move that item 38 be adopted.
Motion in the second for the discussion. Mary Nunn, all favors, and by saying aye.
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 Close same side, motion carried. Open to public hearing, item number 39, on the rezone. Anybody from the public which to address the board? Mary Nunn, all for the public hearing. Got a motion from the board, for the discussion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion in the second for the discussion. Mary Nunn, all favors, and by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same side, motion carried. With a regular agenda, item number 41, discussion possible action, agreement.
About 40.
All right, go back to open to public hearing on item number 40, discussion possible action amendments in Mojave County's own ordinance, section 37, dash B, dash medical marijuana. Anybody from the public which to address the board? For the public hearing. Got a motion from the board, for the discussion.
Mr. Chairman? I want to just talk about this a little because it's new, the medical marijuana from Prop 207. And I've gotten a lot of questions and I read a lot of the comments that were submitted. And I know in California, they allow townships and places, cities, to decide on their own whether they want to have these dispensaries. Was there anything in our, in that initiative that gave some leeway to communities?
Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Angus, I would probably have to lean on Attorney Esplin for some assistance on whether the proposition allowed for that, for the individual cities and townships or towns and that. What this item does is initially with the medical marijuana being approved previously, planning and zoning went through and updated our zoning ordinance to comply with state statute. The most current proposition basically expanded that, the initial, to include recreational dispensaries in addition to the medical dispensaries. So ultimately, what this does is rather than defining those as medical marijuana dispensaries, it basically just refers to them as dispensaries and brings us in line with the state statute. But as far as individual cities and towns, I don't have that information.
I think it's kind of important, like I said, I know that in California, because I've heard of places that actually went to vote with their citizens to start, small communities, you know, large ones, but the small communities who want to, you know, for whatever reason, want to keep their communities. And so this one in Scenic, I thought, you know, lent itself to having this discussion, if there's a possibility that the citizens, the residents of that community can do something if they don't want that in their communities.
Chairman Johnson, if I could just chime in on this?
Yes, Mr. Esplin.
Responding to Supervisor Angus, if you look at 36-2857, this is the new law that was imposed. A locality may enact reasonable zoning regulations that limit the use of the land for the marijuana establishments and marijuana testing facilities. A locality may limit the number of marijuana establishments or marijuana testing facilities. A locality may prohibit marijuana establishments or testing facilities or both, regulate the time, place, and manner of marijuana establishments and marijuana testing facilities, establish reasonable restrictions on public signage regarding marijuana, prohibit or restrict delivery within its jurisdiction. So it looks like there is some ability to do some kind of regulations and things regarding it. We're not completely handcuffed, so to speak, but it looks like, just a quick review of this. I haven't dived fully into it, but just looking at it quickly, it appears as if there is some ability to do some regulations on the local sense.
But as part of our P and Z zoning process, do people, are they being notified? And are we keeping track, anything like that?
So, right now, and I think Chris is going to come help me here with this, but, excuse me. Right now, basically, we allow, the zoning ordinance, excuse me, the zoning ordinance allows for these dispensaries within a C2 zone or more intense zone. So one option would be to look at which zones, if we want to restrict that even more down to, you know, more intense commercial use than just the C2 use. But I'll let Chris chime in a little bit on, as far as the question on, do we track how many? Do we have the opportunity to deny them and that as well?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We are somewhat limited in regulating the dispensaries in the grow areas inasmuch as that we have to treat the recreational marijuana users or dispensaries in grow areas, the same as we do the medical. So we do have that limitation. We can't say because you're recreational, you will be treated differently than the medical marijuana dispensary. The other thing I will point out is that we can do, as Attorney Esplin said, we can do reasonable rules and regulation. In the end, it's the state that permits the actual dispensaries and grow areas themselves. The county does not do that permitting. Right now, we have not been tracking where these items are listed. The original rules and laws stated that if we knew, we couldn't release, it was actually illegal for us to release that information to any individual. So rather than risk the chance of one of our staff, frontline staff members, making a mistake and saying, "Oh, well, there's one over here on such and such street," we actually have not been keeping that information just to make sure we don't accidentally release it and have one of our staff members inadvertently find that, you know, they've contravened a law somewhere.
I guess my question is, is there any recourse for people who live in these small communities? Like, you know, perfect example is the letters we've been getting, small, you know, one-road towns that would rather it not happen. Now, I know it's, I'm just asking if there's any recourse? Is there any process that citizens of these communities can take?
I believe the answer, and I'll ask Attorney Esplin to chime in if I'm not correct, but I believe that any action they could take would probably be through, right now at any rate, through the rezone process and they'd have to come to this board for these smaller population centers. You know, they have, they're not incorporated, so they have no corporate jurisdiction in and of their own right. That corporate jurisdiction lies with this board.
Okay, and this is really just to change the zoning so it's in compliance with the law? But I just, is there any way we could get some clarification about what that process may look like for communities if they wanted to do this?
Well, if I could chime in there, Chairman, I would say that what you're going to see, and I think what Chris hit on is exactly, it puts, it puts the marijuana dispensaries on the same, it puts the recreational marijuana in the same footing as the marijuana medical dispensaries. So what you see in the medical marijuana dispensaries is the same thing that you're going to be seeing in these new ones. That's the key thing in this that we're talking about and explaining here is that what you saw in the old, the new has to be the same. The new has to be the same as the old. If you look at it, it says, "A locality may not enact an ordinance, regulation, or rule that is more restrictive than a comparable ordinance, regulation, or rule that applies to nonprofit medical marijuana dispensaries." So if we have an ordinance that applies to the medical marijuana dispensaries, then we can also apply that ordinance to this as well. But if we do not have an ordinance to that, then we cannot have an ordinance for the new one. They've got to be on the same footing.
Right, I understand that. I just know in other states like Washington even, they allow it city by city. They make their own decision about what they want, what they don't want. And so in the state of Washington, there are none in Tacoma, which is a pretty big city. They made that decision. They had a vote, they made that decision. And again, I will look into that too, to see if there's anything that, you know, public can do if they feel very strongly about it in their community.
Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Angus, I think in line with that, it would be, really the intent of this ordinance is to line up the medical with the recreational. But if the board chose to further restrict dispensaries in general, then as long as it applied across the board, that would be an option that the board could do.
And as long as it's consistent with state law.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman Johnson?
Ryan Linker. I understand what Ryan is saying, where we have to treat the recreational side as the same as the medical side, I get that. But at the same time, I think we all have to recognize that the recreational side does change things a little bit. I know City of Kingman, they have, you know, regulated, you know, pretty strictly on these things. And in the unincorporated areas, I think that those communities, those people, they depend on us to make those same type of restrictions. So I don't know if there's any way to do it. It sounds like there might be, but because the recreational component is new, I think it might be a good idea to conduct some sort of a more rigorous review regarding the unincorporated areas of Mojave County. Maybe there's certain areas within the unincorporated parts of Mojave County where we want tighter restrictions. I'd be in support of reviewing that and looking at that.
I guess my question would be to Mr. Esplin, we have the change in front of us today, so probably we should go ahead and put that in so that we're in line with the law and then we can come back and look at it. I think the problem we might have though with looking at it would be equal justice for everybody. We can't say, "Well, Golden Valley might be able to have it." I mean, I don't know if that's true, but maybe Mr. Esplin would know that or we can bring it back at a later date.
I agree with your statement that we should, and our recommendation is to adopt the provision, the item that is before you today so that you're consistent with Arizona law. But moving forward, you can certainly look at it and have a review to determine, you know, maybe there's an area that we need to restrict more because we're having more problems and things like that. You'd have to be very specific to say, "This is the reason why we're doing this and it's addressing this particular issue." It's going to be something that has to be reasonably related to address the, to address the problem. Yes, you could do that.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman? I'm waiting to be recognized.
Didn't see who it was, sir. Right at the supervisor.
Does anybody know whether this requires enabling legislation from the legislature? When the medical marijuana initiative was passed, we had to enact certain rules. I thought that applied here also, and I don't want to jump the gun and get out ahead of the legislature until they enact those enabling rules. But basically what happened with this deal was the marijuana, medical marijuana dispensaries use the voters to create a monopoly for themselves so that they are the only ones that can sell recreational marijuana. that can sell recreational marijuana. But, that being said, I don't want to get out in front of the legislature and just have to come back and change the things that we're doing, because I think that creates more problems to give people the go-ahead and then to come back and change the rules after we've already given somebody the go-ahead. And that's effectively what we're doing, if you, you change that word from medical marijuana dispensary to marijuana dispensaries. Thank you.
Chairman, if I could address that?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould, you're correct, there, the, the legislature, the, the act that was passed requires the Department of Health Services to enact rules. They have until, I think, June of this year to, to do that. But I'm guessing here that the rules are going to be more related to the distribution of the marijuana, the rules governing the business side of it, and not so much the zoning side. This is the zoning part of it that we're trying to amend, as opposed to the business, the everyday transactions that, that, that the department will be, will be regulating. So you're correct that there will be rules that need to be imposed, and I don't think those rules have been created yet, but I'm not necessarily worried that those rules are going to necessarily interfere with what they're trying to address here, because this is more zoning stuff.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ryan, the, but we don't know.
True, that's true, I'm just.
We're making an assumption that all they're going to do is, is change the rules of how to operate that business, but they could add additional rules on where those businesses can be located.
And, and if that's the case, that's, they could do that, I, I'm just guessing that I don't think that that's what they had in mind, that, that the Department of Public Health, that, excuse me, the Department of Health Services would be governing zoning stuff. I, I just, I'm guessing that the department would be more concerned about the everyday business operations as opposed to the, to that, but they could be, you're exactly right, I, I don't know.
Bearing in mind, it's a citizens' initiative also, and generally, the citizens' initiatives have problems legally. They, they're not well thought out, they don't go through the sausage-making process of the legislature, where we have ninety people take their crack at that, at that proposed law. Is there a deadline that we have to approve this by?
Not that I know of, I don't.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Baller.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I, the law is, the law itself is in, in force today, and I think one of the things the department's looking at is that we are already getting requests for information about these recreational dispensaries. Now, while the permitting agency is the Department of Health Services at the state level, they require that the person trying to establish the dispensary obtain a letter from the local government saying whether or not that particular location they have chosen is compliant with zoning rules. It is a lot more clear for the staff if we have something in ordinance that tells the staff what they're to do and how they're to respond to the Department of Health Services if we have it in our ordinance. In absence of that, really, our only action is to treat it like it would be a marijuana, or a medical marijuana facility, in which case, anything C two or more intense zone, the dispensary or the grow area would be allowed. So in absence of anything adopted by the board, we just, for lack of a better direction to go, would probably just treat it like a medical marijuana facility.
Do you know what they've done in Lake Havasu, because they're selling, selling the marijuana there? Once the pleasure of the board.
Chairman Johnson?
Supervisor Linganfeltler.
Just a couple more comments, and maybe directed to Manager Elters, to your, to your staff, and also to Ryan, but I know when you go through some sort of zoning process, when you're going through and putting forward a general plan, I mean, there's a public comment portion. For something like this, maybe you would want to talk to the sheriff's office to, you mentioned it has to be on a criteria. So maybe a valid criteria would be something regarding the, the drug-related stuff, I don't know. But I just feel like there should be, with this new thing, this new recreational thing, there should be some sort of a, some sort of a public comment thing for the county and overlay it with maybe our sheriff's office data, to see if there are some areas where maybe we want a few more restrictions, just on dispensaries in general, now that everything has changed. I just think it's a smart thing to do. It isn't, it doesn't, it doesn't take away from the whole county, just there might be some certain areas, like in Scenic, you know, where they feel very strongly against this.
Mr. Elters.
Mr. Chairman, board members, would the board consider, in light of this discussion, tabling this item, allowing staff to go back, revisit it, broaden the discussion, and come back, broaden the discussion with the comments and the concerns of board members noted, and come back to the board with additional information, perhaps a recommendation that would be consistent with the law, yet perhaps addresses the all or some of the concerns that the board members have expressed? Would, is, is it okay to table this item and direct staff to come back?
It's up on the board to consider. I, I think what the board has done in the past too, is we've been taking what the state has given us, so that we don't really get involved, because it's still against the law at the federal level, so we've been kind of going, letting the state take all the heat. So do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we continue this for thirty days.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number forty-two is accept the Justice of Peace John Taylor's resignation, effective March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, and validate the recommended election, selection process, agendize the issue of selection of a successor appointee as soon as reasonably possible, but no later than April fifth. Skip forty-one. Yeah, sorry, we'll get this one first. Yeah. Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Gould.
I move that we adopt this item forty-two. Forty-one, uh, no, we're on forty-two.
No, we're on forty-two.
At least the chairman and I are on forty-two, I'm unsure where everybody else is.
Chairman's broad, go where he wants.
I'm on forty-two, I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to recognize that the Honorable John Taylor served this county honorably for many, many years, and I just want to wish him the best of luck in his retirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
I second those sentiments.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, item forty-one, discussion, possible action, approve of the agreement of the U.S. Geological Society Arizona Water Science Center. Any discussion or motion?
Mr. Chairman, just for the record for the board, this item is a continuation of an ongoing effort. It has been going on in the last three years or so, it's a partnership between Mojave County, City of Kingman, and the USGS. What is in front of you is a proposal to continue that and primarily enable the team to have the tools necessary to model the groundwater and continue to track it. The cost is reasonable, it's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars over five years, split three ways, with Mojave County, Mojave County's portion being fifty-eight thousand five hundred, again, spread over five years.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I just wanted to thank the City of Kingman, the mayor, and the city council for partnering with us yet again, and I think this is, this is part of the teamwork with the, with the city and the county and our state representatives to forward, move on to protect Mojave County water interests. So with that being said, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that. I'd also say, this is important water work, I'm glad that the City of Kingman has, has partnered with the county, and last year I would say vice versa, so, thank you.
Motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number forty-three, Supervisor Linganfeltler.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. This is an item requesting a letter of support only from the Board of Supervisors for a regional advanced workforce training center. It's an initiative that really started in October of two thousand and nineteen, and really the, the emphasis behind that is realizing that not everybody in the county can have a four-year degree, that, that this training facility that the college is going for is for truck driving, for the trades, for all of those workforce manufacturing type of skill sets, industrial skill sets that, you know, are important to Mojave County. So I think that Dr. Klippenstein from MCC is here, and we have a brief presentation I think he's going to provide to the county board and to the citizens to show you what they're looking for their support. Thanks, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Chairman Johnson, members of the board, Supervisor Linganfeltler, I'm Stacy Klippenstein, the president of Mojave Community College, it's a pleasure to be here today. You do have a brief presentation, it looks like it is up. This is a proposal that we just created to be able to share with Representative Cobb, who is attempting to take this initiative forward through the state, to be able to receive some funds mixed with Mojave Community College to build a twenty thousand-plus square foot advanced manufacturing training center out at the new industrial park region of Kingman. The idea behind that, and as Linganfeltler, Mr. Linganfeltler said earlier, that this really did start about over a year ago, in October of two thousand and nineteen, working with folks from Kingman, the City of Kingman, Mayor Miles, folks from Mojave Community College, at the time, City Councilman Linganfeltler, as well as Representative Cobb, we had some different meetings to talk about the importance of this. Since that time, what we did is took an opportunity to visit with our folks from Kama and create a survey, and of the survey, we found that of all the advanced manufacturing needs of the, the industries out there and in future potential industries that would be moving into this park, we found that our goal is to be able to create training that's centered around foundations of manufacturing, electrical controls, robotics, machining, hydraulics, pneumatics, process control, and many more, as well as some four credit. So these would be some of the non-credit programs that we would offer, there'd be very short-term, industry-recognized credentials that would allow, be more modular-based, that would allow for any employer or group of employees, for any group to come in at any point in time to be able to take a certain set of training modules, to be able to help them in both the new, the businesses as well as themselves, be able to advance in, in their employment. What we also found is for four credit programs, so we are anchoring our electrical and HVAC programs out at this industrial park as well, those are credential-type of four-credit programs. Our main goal is to really help Kingman and Mojave County advance in creating and bringing in new businesses and industries into this area, and with the new industrial park, and with the amount of acres that will be there, we believe that the Advanced Manufacturing Training Center can help attract those businesses and industries. We also partner with Sunbelt, who is the developer coming in, and they are donating ten acres of land out there for this facility, it would be on airway and wagon wheel, so it'd be really centrally located as you come into the park, as well as would be really close to our middle school and elementary school out there, so our whole goal is to create an educational hub, so it'd be tied in with, with the county, the C Teds or J-Ted Wave, it'd be tied in with the high schools, as well as the middle school out there for getting students interested into STEM training, into manufacturing training, to find that there are other jobs that are available. Our whole goal is to help expand in the future as well, utilize the center for possibility of AI coding, drone technology, sustainable energy, training, and so forth, so we do want to have this bill, this facility able to advance that. Our whole goal also is to be able to work with industries on apprenticeship and work-based learning models, and so they can use our training, mixed in with their hands-on learning that they're getting in their jobs, and get those apprenticeships and be able to get higher page, higher wage jobs. The cost is five point five million for the facility, and that's about just over twenty thousand square foot, as well as seven hundred thousand for the site improvements, which would include a CDL training range. As you know, we are partnered with Phoenix Truck Driving School, we're offering CDL training. Our whole goal is to actually have a full-fledged range out there to provide that training. So, and then the additional equipment and the curriculum cost will be just over about one point five million, and that's something Mojave Community College would look at funding. So at this time, we are just asking for a letter of support from the Board of Supervisors to Representative Cobb, and so we can move this proposal forward, hopefully with great support from you with the, the state. Thank you.
I know you have a presentation there, for the members of the audience, do you want to just scroll through that really quick?
Oh, yeah, I can, sorry. Easy to do that, okay. I will show you, oops. One of the things that we were taking a look at, we worked with Cora Architects, who is also working with the city, as well as Sunbelt with the advancement of the training facility. We did take a look at kind of a visionary approach to this, and what would the headlines look like in the future for Mojave Community College in this area? We are really attempting to connect this into it, to achieve sixty Arizona, so sixty percent attainment with some credential or degree. The whole idea about this, this would be a county-wide effort, so it would tie into new manufacturing that would be coming in Lake Havasu. Recently, we met with PMG down there, and they took a look at this concept, and also our welding programs and so forth, and they said that, yes, they would have people that would need this type of training. So it wouldn't just be Kingman, but it would be broad. But our whole goal is to be able to, you know, celebrate that five hundred current technical training students graduated in two thousand and twenty-four, that we had over a thousand people coming through and getting some sort of specialized training, that we would be a hub really of the, that we would help this area be a hub of manufacturing and industries moving into the northwest region of, of Arizona. So what we would be looking at in the proposed new advancement is areas of electrical, manufacturing, mechanical, CDL training, HVAC, also the robotics in the future, so we are looking at purchasing a welding robotics arm that can actually get people trained on how to use robotics, how to, you have to have people trained to be able to know how to use those in order to set up those systems. So there's quite a bit that we would offer out there, they're individualized modules, so the facility itself would be expanded and large enough to be able to offer classes at any given time in any of these. Also, they're all computer-based, so you would get your hands on and then plus come back and do your, your computerized test, and then be able to get that certification to move on. And the facility itself would be located out, again, on wagon wheel and airway, so when that's all new, working with Sunbelt, with them moving the utilities out into that region, so we'd be able to tap into those utilities right there at the property line, and they, again, are looking at donating that, and right now, according to them, it's about a one point eight million dollar donation. So it's about nine, well, it'll sit on nine point five acres. So what you have in front of you here, if you can see that, would be the, where the facility would stand, it would be a two-story facility, it would have a large conference room for us to bring in K through twelve and hold other type of seminars out of there and larger groups. It would overlook the actual, the training floor, so they can actually observe and see what's going on. The main aspect of it would be a bit, large computer room classrooms, as well as the individualized sections for the specific training that's going on within hydraulics or mechanics and so forth. So, as you will be able to see from the facility, we also have three point one acres that will be dedicated to the CDL training range. The overall is just over twenty-one thousand square feet, and the cost is about two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, based on some information they received from some contractors. You'll be able to see the floor plan here of Level One and Level Two. And our timeline that we're looking at is, we hope to be able to open this January of two thousand and twenty-three, so that's a pretty tight and fast timeline, we hope we can receive some monies from the state, connected with MCC funding, to be able to move this quickly, and to be able to open up in January of two thousand and twenty-three. That will allow us time to also buy the equipment and get the curriculum set up and have the trained faculty and instructors available. And as you will see from the project cost estimates, we are looking at about five point five million for the facility, two hundred and forty thousand to purchase the curriculum, about one point five million-ish for the equipment, as well as seven hundred thousand for the parking lot, CDL driving range. So the total project is just about eight million dollars would be total. So the total project is just about eight million dollars would be total for the project. And then in there, we have letters of support already from Lake Havasu City. We also have it from Kingman. We also have a letter coming from Kama Group. We also have a letter coming from Bullhead City. We also have a letter from Arizona at Works, and I do want to recognize Arizona at Work for the assistance behind the scenes in looking at this program, as well as County Economic Development Director Tammy Ersenbach, who has been with us along the way for this initiative. So there's a brief overview of the project, and I would look for your support. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor.
Sir, will you be able to fund this with your existing MCC tax levy? Are you planning to float a bond to pay for this?
No, we would look, we would look internally with funds that we have available that our board helps us at least manage on an annual basis. So our board reviews our budgets, and they do set aside some monies for capital improvements. So we would not go out to a bond.
Okay, so you'd be able to fund the capital, this capital expense with your existing tax levy?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
If we, also, hopefully with some money coming in from the state to make it a little bit easier on the checkbook, yes.
Okay, but what I'm trying to get is a commitment from you that you won't raise our property taxes to fund this project?
I understand that.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's always a good question.
Are there any other questions? Supervisor Angus.
We will not raise taxes because of this program.
That's our absolute goal, is not to raise taxes on this.
That's your goal, okay.
Yes, absolutely. No, I'm not a big fan of that as well, so thank you.
Okay, so right now at your other campuses, your satellite campuses, Bullhead City, Lake Havasu, they have programs similar. I mean, are you, is your goal to move everything to this new facility? Or would there still be things for people, local people, who maybe can't get up to Kingman and things like that? So what are you going to keep in the local campuses?
Yeah, the local, so such as, I'll use Lake Havasu as an example. So down there, we have our HVAC program. We would keep the HVAC program down there. We would keep the HVAC and welding programs and electrical programs in where they're at. Our whole goal is to move our electrical program here in Kingman out to the new center, and then bring in a brand-new HVAC training center to Kingman, which we don't have. So we would still keep those at the local area of control. What would be new or central to the Kingman Park would be, or facility, would be all the stuff that's centered around the advanced manufacturing stuff. Those would not be duplicated, because it would be really expensive to duplicate down to Bullhead or to Lake Havasu. But the current programs they have, they would stay.
And also trucking, we have that program with Dot Foods, and that would stay.
Our whole goal is to actually expand and do a range also in Bullhead, because there's such a high demand, and work with Dot Foods and the city down there as well. We have some property that we were looking at for a potential range. This would be the range here, because we have such a high volume, and it's I forty, I eleven corridor. But yes, Bullhead, we will look at expanding down there would be our next step for CDL training.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Supervisor Lingefelter?
Go ahead Supervisor Bishop.
Okay, thank you. I think this is an extraordinary proposal, and I thank you for bringing this forward. I think my view is, as the county and the city continues to grow with the construction of the Rancho Santa Fe interchange, I see a lot of strong growth in the manufacturing area, and, and not everybody can go to college. So this is just perfect, and I think Kingman's been needing this for, for as long as I can remember. This will serve the entire city of Kingman, the airport, industrial park, and the I forty corridor. So I see nothing but a win-win if we can make this happen, and I'm here to support any, any way that I can. And I just want to really thank you for putting this all together and bringing it to us.
Thank you.
I have a question. Have you dealt with the JTED or the CTED program?
The college does work with Amy West and the CTED and JTEDs, and we would work with them on how this would all fold together for high school students.
Anything else, Mr. Lingefelter?
Chairman Johnson, thank you. You've also been in contact with the folks up on the strip, on the Arizona Strip, as they are continuing to build up their economy now, that they may be able to have sometime down the road, it's maybe some temporary housing where they could bring some people down, use this facility to train, and then go back up and use those skills. Is that correct?
Yeah, that was one of the requests when I went up there for a community advisory council meeting, and a lot of the people up there really felt like there's an opportunity to get some individuals trained there to come down to other locations in, at MCC. And one of the ideas that was floated was if there was some short-term housing option that the school either had, that they can come down and get trained anywhere at the park or something with electrical, our goal would be to do something around construction trades as well. So with that, yes, there is that option. They do recognize that this would be extremely valuable up to that Colorado City area in the Arizona Strip.
Chairman Johnson. I will make a motion that we approve and authorize you to sign a letter of support.
I'll second that.
Motion second, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item forty-four brought to us by Supervisor Ghul. We do have somebody who wants to speak. We'd like them first or after.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an extension of an existing approval. They missed their deadline, and rather than spending the money to go back through the entire process, they're just, the developers are just asking for an extension.
We have a person signed up, Ray Sadler? I guess Supervisor Ghul, the only problem I have with this is started in ninety-four. They've missed a lot of deadlines, not answered us a lot of times. I would think in all those years, it's time for them to go back to the drawing table. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Ghul.
Move that item forty-four be adopted.
Second.
Motion is second for discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Aye. Item forty-five, discussion, possible action, adopt and publish redistricting principles. Determine whether redistricting will be managed in-house or by a consultant, and if by consultant, draft the RFP, solicit bids, select and contract with a consultant. We have the one signed up for this, Steve Robinson.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Stephen Robinson from Golden Valley. Ten years ago, we went through the redistricting process. We spent a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to a Democrat firm out of Maryland to do the whole work for us of redistricting. There was only one precinct where the whole issue of Article Five of Voting Rights Act mattered, and that theoretically, that precinct was Oatman, because thirty-eight percent of the population was Hispanic. Unfortunately, that, most of that thirty-eight percent were due to the prison, and so the actual number of voters was only like a hundred and fifty voters in the whole precinct. And so none of the precincts in Mojave County had any issue and could not have been drafted for the supervisory districts or the community college districts or the precincts for Justice of the Peace. None of them could have been drawn to where they'd have a majority or a significant number of minorities in them. So I encourage you not to spend money, do it in-house, invite someone from within our state that understands the process of the Voting Rights Act, the Article Five, to where they will review it and sign off on it. I think in twenty-two thousand, only one person was involved in the whole redistricting and creating of the maps and precincts. So I think we can do it. In fact, Yavapai County only spent forty-six thousand letting this same firm review their maps, and I, even they were not happy with that much of an expenditure. Secondly, the, the big issue in our county is in two thousand and fifteen, we went from seventy-three precincts to twenty-four precincts. Fourteen or fifteen of them, fifteen of them were the rural precincts. They didn't change hardly at all. But what we did is we combined fifty, it was, yeah, fourteen. We combined fifty-nine precincts into nine super precincts. And now, like in Golden Valley, maybe that makes sense, because there's only, now only one voting location. But in Kingman, Bullhead, and Havasu, there's like four to seven voting locations. And when you have the super precincts, you don't give a chance to create communities of interest where they can work together and they have their own one precinct location. Yes, they're looking at going to voting centers, but I encourage you, for the benefit of operations on a political side, to create precincts surrounding each of the four locations in Havasu. There's like seven voting locations here in Bull, in Kingman, and there's, there was four voting locations in Bullhead. If you create precincts that reduces the size of the precincts down, it would help the voters.
Thank you. On this, for Mr. Lingefelter's benefit, I don't know if you paid attention, ten years ago, when we brought somebody in, we had them review what the county had put together because of the Justice Department, and we do have the Indian nations here, and we do have to worry about getting it passed by them. And basically, what they do is review it. So we could do the same thing. As Mr. Robinson's saying, I think it would, the cost would be cheaper, but having the outside person who has worked for the Justice Department and done this previously, it's a good way for us to stay, keep from getting in trouble.
Chairman Johnson. If the Elections Director is in the audience, I'd like to hear what his thoughts are on this.
And while he's coming down here, if I could just add a couple, a component to this, the one difference between two thousand and ten to today is in two thousand and thirteen, the Supreme Court struck down a provision of the Voting Rights Act, Section Four, that required the preclearance. So just so you're aware, we no longer have the preclearance requirement. However, as Supervisor Johnson pointed out, or excuse me, Chairman Johnson pointed out, we still have to comply with the Voting Rights Act. We still have to make sure that we're compliant with Section Five and all those portions. And as, as Chairman Johnson pointed out, we don't want to go sideways with the Department of Justice. They could enforce any kind of action against us if we, if we set up something that is contrary to the Voting Rights Act. I just wanted to make sure the court, make sure that the board is aware of that, though.
Thank you. Mr. Temper.
Supervisor Lingefelter, Chairman Johnson. My thoughts, I lived through one of them before. I lived through the two thousand and ten into two thousand and eleven, okay? I'll tell you what, the consultants were the right way to go. Totally unbiased, they were the numbers people, they're their analysts. I don't have, I'll be honest with you, I have a great skill set to do a lot of things, but not this. I am not an analyst when it comes down to this, and I don't know if we have the resources in the county. I know we have people, but to dedicate to such a thing, these organizations have the expertise to do this. They come up with a couple of different plans, up to a couple of different plans, you know, for people taken into consideration, taken into criteria, that will say that the deciding body, as yourself, you know, think are important. I personally think it is the right thing to do. I do not want to be in front of the Department of Justice, because somebody comes up against and starts claiming and claims a possibility of, you know, discrimination, is really what I've got to say. You always hear the word gerrymandering is going to start coming up this way, right and left, no matter what we do or don't do, okay? We get under their thumb. The next thing I know, for the next ten years, they are sitting in my office for every election. They're making sure we're doing everything right, you know? So basically speaking, it was the right thing to do ten years ago, and I think it's the right thing to do now. And I am highly, you know, I mean, I'm going to support the system as much as possible, when ten years ago, I had a huge part in this. I mean, I didn't draw the lines, I didn't do the numbers, but I did a lot of the organ, you know, organizing, the town meetings, you know, getting out, explaining what was being proposed, you know? Coming to some of these meetings, you know, like to discuss a little bit of how the process was going. So if you really want to know my opinion, it's definitely the right thing to do is to go outside, because ten years ago, I believe, Mr. Robinson might get me, he might got a number on me, this guy's always doing his stuff, right? But I believe twelve, eleven or twelve of the fifteen counties went and did exactly what I'm proposing to do and what we did ten years ago. I mean, we had Maricopa, the big boys, they got seven people in their GIS team working in elections alone, okay? Some of the big dogs have, they, they do, that's their full-time jobs. This is not our full-time job. Sometimes, like if you need expertise in something, you go out and you have to hire, nothing against Attorney Espeland, but sometimes you got to bring somebody in from outside, you know, that is says, is more into, in line with, you know, that whole area or something like that. So this is really what this comes down to it, you know? I truly believe this is what we should do.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Angus.
It's, it was a little different in two thousand and ten, because we went from three to five districts.
We did.
Correct? So how much of a difference, you know, I mean, just from historically speaking and from what we see, we didn't go, we're not going to go up tons in, in population. I mean, to me, it's just going to be a few tweaks. I, I can't see where it's going to be this big change on everything. I mean, there are some places that didn't make sense last time. We still scratch our heads over it. For instance, why Oatman is in District Four and not either in District Five or District Two. Those things can be corrected, but again, I mean, it's, I'll go with whatever the board wants, but it's not going to be as, as crazed as it was in two thousand and ten.
Absolutely, I agree. We haven't changed a lot in the last ten years, but we need somebody to prove that. This is really my thought, is somebody to say, of expertise to say, yep, this is it. You work with the right people, you're not going to have anybody question a whole lot what you're going to do in the world from the Department of Justice.
Chairman Johnson.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
Alan, noting the differences between what the county had to go through in two thousand and ten and now, would you say that the scope is, this time around would be maybe far less and be reflected in the bids that come in?
Absolutely. It would be far less, and the money laid out would be less. These are professional firms, they're consulting firms, they do this for a living, and they work, you know, they work on how much effort they put in. So I would expect this not to be nearly as much money as it was last time.
And no offense to you and your, your team, but I think I heard you say that if you don't have the talent in-house, you know, that's really the only valid reason why an organization would go out and contract with somebody, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
And I think also, what we should look at, MCC will go along with our lines, but we should probably allow JTED or any other elected body that might want to tag onto our contract. I think they did that last time, because I think JTED's the only one, they have what, two people in Bullhead, two people in Kingman, two people in Havasu, and one in La Paz, so might be cheaper for them to tag into ours.
As well as Justice of the Peace precincts. They need to be done as well.
Don't they go, they go by credits, though, correct?
But they go by credits, but they still, it's still a basic thing, it's still a population along with credits as well, so.
Mr. Chairman. Board member, really quick, we did go back and look at the records from two thousand and ten related to cost, and just for your information, for the board information, we had a scope of work, including getting it through the Department of Justice. The, the not-to-exceed cost was a hundred and thirty K. The actual cost came in under eighty. We believe if we were to go to a consultant this time, the not-to-exceed cost would be under a hundred, and the actual cost would be lower, just so you know.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or discussions?
Chairman Johnson.
As Supervisor Angus pointed out, there, there are some, some problems that need to be tweaked, and, and the Oatman area is, is one of them. It's difficult to get to Oatman and, and sometimes because of weather and the treacherous road up there, makes sense that it would be in, in either District Five or District Two. But also, on the west end of Golden Valley, we have residents there that are paying school tax, and they're, they're paying for the new fieldhouse in, in Bullhead City. And, yeah, I would lean toward having a professional consultant try to, try to tweak these areas and make it a little more fair for my constituents and everyone else's, as far as that goes.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Supervisor Johnson, I'll put that in the form of a motion, that we hire a, or put out a RFP for a consultant and solicit bids and select and contract with a company.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll now bring up Public Health Director.
Chairman Johnson, members of the board, I will start out, as I always do, with the numbers. As of January 29th, there have been a total of 17,283 COVID-19 cases in the county to date. 10,630 of those cases have recovered. We've had 456 deaths, and 1,587 people have been hospitalized at some point during their illness. Average age of cases is 47.7, average age of deaths is 75.6, and our case fatality rate sits at about 2.6%. I'll go through the hospital update, and just to be clear, as you know, and I've mentioned this at every board meeting for the last month or so, this data changes, it's very dynamic, it changes day to day. So we try to find trends, if you will, that will help you kind of see where things are really changing on a, on a longer-term basis, whether or not that's through a week or through a month. This week's data shows an increase in hospital service usage over recent weeks. As a whole, January showed moderate COVID-19 visits, counts compared to December. However, this week's average COVID-plus ED visits was elevated due to a few key days of high visit counts. ICU beds remain dangerously full across the county, and this week reached our highest to-date average daily ICU bed usage. Three hospitals show 0 to 1 ICU bed availability. This week showed an increase in percent of ICU beds occupied, COVID patients seen in the ED, and COVID-plus admissions. All hospitals report staffing issues, some listing as severe. ICU usage reached an all-time high of 84% occupied, with 46% of those as COVID-plus, COVID-positive patients. Inpatient beds hover at about 97% occupied, with about a third of those cases being COVID-19 cases. Any questions there? We did see a decrease in the last couple of weeks in our case counts. I think if you looked at our dashboard, you'd see that the two weeks previous, we had a total of 336 cases. That was basically cut in half the last two weeks, so we were sitting at about 171 cases. That number may change a little bit, as you know, that, that number can fluctuate a little bit, week to week, until it becomes finalized, but that's what we have at this point in time. As you know, there are several variants of the coronavirus out in the, out in the global community. The Arizona Department of Health Services, and Maricopa County Department of Public Health, and Pinal County Public Health Services District, along with ASU, reported Friday that the so-called UK COVID-19 variant B.1.1.7 has been confirmed in three test samples from Arizona. The United Kingdom identified this new strain in the fall of 2020, it was first detected in the U.S. at the end of December. Multiple variants of the virus that causes COVID-19 have been documented in the U.S. and globally. It is typical for viruses to change through mutation, and new variants of a virus are expected to occur over time. Sometimes new variants emerge and disappear, other times new variants appear and linger. It is not known how widely the variant may be spread in Arizona, and ADHS is working with laboratory and public health partners, including the CDC, to monitor the situation. So as we have updates, we'll certainly provide those to all of you.
Denise, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
When they test for COVID, do they test for all these different strains, or how are they identified?
Certainly, they do genetic sequencing at those, at some of these labs. So TGen in Phoenix, and I believe ASU in the Valley, are providing genetic sequencing assistance here. And so they go through and receive samples from the state lab and from some of the local laboratories, and, and do the sequencing to identify any new strains that might be coming into the state.
So they do that on every test?
I don't know that it's done on every test Supervisor Bishop, I, I don't know if they send a sample of them. I don't know that those two labs could actually accommodate all of the tests that come through. But I can certainly find that out for you, if you'd like. What percent maybe of, of those tests are sent to those labs for genetic sequencing?
Okay. Yeah, I'd be interested in knowing how that's done.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Angus.
Well, this is the first time I, I heard about this DNA thing, but if they're doing, did they just start it, have been doing it all along?
They've, I believe they've been doing it for quite some time, Supervisor Angus. And they've been doing it in the background, because it hasn't really impacted our state as of now. But that is occurring at this point, probably on a more regular basis.
Because if they weren't doing it from the beginning, they have nothing to compare it to.
Mm-hmm, correct. But they're, they're using genetic sequencing from other countries to identify that particular genetic sequence for the UK variant, and then applying that information, they test to see if any of ours meet that criteria.
Okay.
The discovery of this variant in the state is yet another reason for Arizona's to follow the mitigation strategies proven to reduce the spread of COVID-19, starting, of course, with wearing a mask, maintaining physical distance, washing hands, avoid touching your eyes, nose, and mouth with unwashed hands, staying home when you are sick, cover your cough or sneeze, and clean and disinfect, frequently touch surfaces, the typical things that we've mentioned for about the last, what, 11 months now? Are we on 12 months? We at a year yet? Probably not. Okay, so we'll move on to vaccine, because I know this is a very important topic and of interest to many. Mojave County is open to all 1A and 1B protective service occupations and 75 years and older populations. We are maintaining these phases because, there are a couple of reasons, very important reasons. First and foremost, of the 456 deaths in our county, 74% of those came from 70 and over. So they are a high-risk population, and I know the 65-plus to 74 crosses that boundary, but you can see that's, it's a very important group for us to reach. And within our county, we have 28,514 individuals who are 75 years and older, and 37,266 that are 65 to 74. So when we move into that phase and include 65 and older and educators, we're going to be there for a while. So just want to be clear, it'll take us some time between vaccine and our providers, and vaccine will likely more be the limiting factor for a while. Hopefully, that'll break out, but at this point, that's what we know. Public health continues to work with providers to ensure the county meets the directives outlined in the Governor's Executive Order 2021-01. Let me grab for you, I have an update on vaccine totals. So from this morning's count from our providers, we've, in Mojave County, 13,732 doses of the vaccine have been administered. And if you look at that number, in the absence of this week's allocation of 2,000, that would be 60, 66% of the vaccine in our county. If you include this week's allocation, which those facilities have not yet received, that would be 60%, to give you some perspective. So about 6% difference. The top priority is to monitor vaccine administration rates and move quickly towards a goal of 80% or greater usage every week of the vaccine that arrives, and our current inventory to reach that level. Two strategies are currently being implemented to assist with this effort: direct vaccines to sites that conserve, that conserve large numbers, and transfer vaccine to these same sites. So if we notice within a facility that it is not being utilized quickly enough, we will ask that facility to transfer some of those doses or all of those doses, depending upon the conversation and the amount, to other sites, so that it could be used more quickly. We would like wherever we can to keep them within the community that we originally allocated them, because those are based on a percentage. So we're trying to be equitable across the entire county, in addition to ensuring that the vaccine gets out into the arms of people.
Denise, I have a question.
Sure. Supervisor Bishop.
I think, right now, we have severe challenges that you've outlined, that's impacting our county resources, and the, and the, impeding the rapid deployment of these vaccines. And as I shared with you over the weekend, there are some concerns out there that our snowbird population are receiving vaccines that are allocated from Mojave County. And this is a valid concern, because I think Havasu has approximately 20,000 winter visitors, and if they're using up the vaccine that should be reserved for county residents, full-time county residents, it doesn't seem quite fair, since we're, we're limited and, and the resources are just not getting to the smaller counties. So can you just go over that a little bit for the public that are watching?
Sure, absolutely, Supervisor Bishop. We're following ADHS's guidance, which is that place of res, place of permanent residence does not dictate whether or not you can get a vaccine in Arizona. I think it would be incredibly difficult for the providers to screen out some of those individuals. It's not impossible, but I think it would, it would mean their systems would have to be updated and upgraded to ensure that people had a valid ID that would reflect that they actually live in this community permanently. The other real important piece to this, though, I think that needs to be mentioned, is that these individuals, when they're in our community for months at a time, they do impact our hospital and healthcare system. And that is going to be something that the hospitals have emphasized quite a bit, is that these particular individuals really do come to our hospitals for services. So if they become positive and they need any form of hospitalization and healthcare, they're certainly going to be impacting our, our local services. I think an example, I'm sorry Supervisor Angus, I know you have a question, so if I could finish my thought, I'll get right to you. You know, there's been concerns, I know, about Laughlin residents, Nevada residents, per se. Those particular individuals would seek care likely at Warmse in Bullhead City. And since they don't have a lot of, they don't have a hospital over there, as I understand it, and maybe just clinics, those individuals, again, are going to impact our, our system. So those are the reasons that we're following these, these guidelines at this point.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Angus.
I don't think anybody has a problem with vaccinating the people who come, our snowbirds, our lifeline, our, our economy. The problem is, we get our allocation based on our population, and that's the problem. So it doesn't really seem like such a difficult thing to do, to add a percentage on to our population. And I, I think CSA is addressing that with some of the rural counties, but it needs to be, it needs to happen, it needs to happen. So if you look at all the numbers we're getting, and then the percentage, so you said, did I hear you right, 60% has been?
If, if you go with the allocation, including the allocation that we will receive this week, so Tuesday and Wednesday of this week, then 60% of that vaccine has been administered.
Okay, what happened to the other 40%?
It's still with the providers, and they have appointments for those particular individuals.
Okay. And, and the oversight on that, have we had any that have gone bad? People ask me that question, are we seeing vaccines that are going bad because of, that some of these providers can't handle the load?
I don't know that we have seen any go bad, expire, in that. Actually, we made phone calls last week to those providers to go through their inventory, to ensure that they were moving any older inventory forward, to make sure that none would actually expire.
Those numbers, 64, whatever, 60%, does that include the providers who are getting their allocation straight from the federal government, like Smith's and Safeway? I mean, how is that factor into our numbers and how we, how we monitor everything?
Right. So I don't believe it includes the Smith's numbers. At this time, we're actually providing the Safeway and Albertsons with vaccine, because the federal program will be starting up, I mean, another, so, there's actually several programs. So let me start. Initially, when we started, Safeway and Albertsons asked if they could come onboard, and onboard, and we said, complete the process, and we would allocate vaccine out to them. Then the state opened up and started the retail program, and they allocated part of their state allocation. And I believe, a couple of weeks ago, that was about 10,000 doses to go to the Smith's, Kroger stores, and Safeway-Albertsons. Now, the federal program, it's a federal retail pharmacy program, will be opening up shortly, and in those, when it does, the federal government will then be providing vaccine to Safeway, Albertsons, Krogers. I believe Walmart is also part of that program, and Costco's. And I'm sure there are others, but as far as local, that is where those allocations will go at a federal level. And we won't have any control over how much they receive, the number. We've been having conversations with ADHS to talk about the need for us to know how many doses they will be receiving, and to ensure that we get that information. Right now, we're fortunate, we have a, a strong relationships with the Smith's Pharmacy Manager, and he's been kind enough to provide us with those updates, of which they won't be receiving vaccine this week, is what we've learned, so.
So when that all happens, the numbers that people see, the numbers you're going to be giving, there'll be, there'll be discrepancies.
There will be.
Yeah. Big discrepancies.
Right, right. And I will say that right now, there are currently discrepancies. If you go to the ADHS website, I know you'll see a number, and if you go to what I just provided right here, you see a different number. Fully recognize and understand and acknowledge that that can be very confusing. What we're finding is that the reporting system for individuals, facilities to report that a vaccine has been used, they go into a database, either into their own electronic medical record system, or enter it directly into ACIS, which is the state system. EMRs, the electronic medical record systems, need to talk with ACIS. And what we found is, we have a number of providers, Embry in particular, where that system isn't talking. So we have a vaccine administered, but then really not officially reported to the state. So we are working with Embry to correct that, but ultimately, it has to be between Embry and the state to correct that, because we don't have a way to intervene in their, because it's basically systems-talking technology. We've also stressed to all of the providers to ensure that they're entering their data in a timely manner, because that is, again, how ADHS is reporting their numbers. So if it's not listed in there, in their eyes, it doesn't exist. So we need to be sure that we are staying up to date on all of that reporting piece. So there's two sides. It's administering it in the first place, but it's also reporting it secondly.
Chairman.
Supervisor Goode.
Denise, how are the providers paid?
I believe they, they submit insurance claims to an insurance, if a person is insured. And if a person is insured, they can receive administrative fees. And I believe those are 16 and $28. First dose is, I believe, 16 to $18. Don't quote me right on that, but it's in that ballpark. And I believe for the second dose, you're 26 to $28. I think I'm in the ballpark there, too.
Curious, the second, is the second dose the same vaccine as the first dose?
It is, correct.
But it's more expensive to do the second dose?
I don't do insurance reimbursement at Supervisor Goode.
Interesting. I was just trying to figure out what's the motivation of these providers even participating in the program, to tell you the truth. Currently, you can't get an appointment. They aren't making a waiting list. Because apparently, all the doses of vaccine are allocated. So they've made a point, every, the doses, they have appointments for all the doses. So people are frustrated.
Yes.
The FEMA helpline, we tested that, and my assistant let it ring about 200 times, and then somebody finally picked it up and answered her question. So finally, somebody did pick- So, finally, somebody did pick it up. So, that process, I don't know how many people would stay on for 200 rings, but, and then we've got the federal government that's not coordinating with local government to tell us what they're doing. We have to find out through the grapevine. So, it just seems rather, I guess I should just assume this is how things are going to go. We're on an unplowed ground, so.
We are.
Yeah, I was just curious. So, if somebody that's, what happens if somebody's uninsured? They get vaccinated anyway?
Correct. The vaccine is free.
I wonder if that goes to their deductible if they are insured? Or do they, is it covered? Probably depends on your insurance plan, I would assume.
I would assume, yes Supervisor Gould. And I'm sorry, I don't know a lot about the insurance world and how billing is done and how that all works on a deductible or otherwise. It should be a preventive service.
Let me loop back to the Vax for Visitors issue again. We've received several complaints about that at my office and just in person. So, what you're saying is, Arizona Department of Health Services says we should or we shall vaccinate anybody that shows up?
Should.
Should.
I don't think there's any language that says shall.
Okay. And the logic there is, those folks are in our community, so if they aren't vaccinated, that it's going to, they're going to be problematic if they're not vaccinated or if you refuse vaccination. Do you have any, do we even know how many non-residents have been vaccinated?
You know, I don't know if we would, let me look into that, okay? And see if we can actually get that number.
Okay. And we also know that we do not receive an additional allocation for the vaccination of non-residents?
So, we were told by ADHS that they took into consideration that we have winter visitors, because we were not alone in voicing our concerns. Certainly, Pinell, Pima, Yuma, and La Paz County just very vocally stated, along with us, that this would be an issue and a concern.
The, I think Arizona should receive half of Wyoming's allotment? Because I'm fully convinced that half the state of Wyoming is in Arizona, although that only amounts to 200,000 people, so it's really not that big of a deal. But we should be drawing that down. But I think it is important to, those winter visitors are here for six months. They're in the high risk, a lot of them are in the high-risk category.
Correct.
But I do wish that we would receive additional doses of vaccine to treat those folks.
I wasn't aware, as Supervisor Angus mentioned, that CSA was advocating on our behalf. So, if that's the case, I do appreciate that.
Well, so is Senator Sinema.
Mm-hmm.
Seems to be the only one in Congress who seems to care about the rural areas in Arizona. Just wanted to mention that.
Sure. Thank you.
Chairman Johnson, if I may.
Director Burley.
Could I go back to the 60% administered, 40% in cold storage? That's really where my focus is. I know that the state is, you know, we don't want our allocations every week to get hindered in any way. Isn't there a state target for, in cold storage, somewhere around 25%? I thought I saw some sort of a standard or a benchmark that they put out.
Supervisor Lingam filter, we're actually shooting for 80%. So, 80% used, that would mean 20% in cold storage.
Right. So, I guess my question is, besides reallocation of doses between sites within communities, which I, that absolutely needs to happen, what else can we do, in your opinion, to work with these private providers to get more shots in people's arms faster?
We are working with some. I'll give you an example. Like, we've recognized that Safeway and Albertsons' current allocation, the way they have it structured, would take a long time to use. So, we are coordinating an event with them this week, in which they expect to allocate and administer about 400 to 500 doses on one particular day. And we'll have more information, I hope, for you soon on that, the location of that and date and times, and how to register. We are transferring doses, I mean, for example, for us, we transferred 500 doses from our inventory that we had to the Embry-Kingman site. Again, once they're fully operational and we increase their hours and increase their numbers, their throughput can be very high. So, we're balancing out those facilities that have given out a first dose, trying to ensure that they can have a second dose for those individuals, but also recognizing we need speed, and it doesn't matter where you go for the second dose, because our county's receiving Moderna. You can go anywhere in the county to get that second dose. I know there are people who prefer to go to the same place, but we do need to ensure that the vaccine is being used and administered very quickly. And, you know, some of these locations, Supervisor Gould, as you mentioned, they're really doing this to help the community. It's not, I don't know that they're receiving a great deal of reimbursement, so they're committing to helping each community and serve them, and as such, we need to try to support them where we can.
Chairman Johnson.
Yes.
Denise is President-elect of the CSA Executive Committee. I'll send you a copy of the letter that I've signed on to for, to request from our members of Congress to ensure that we get additional resources that contain sufficient statutory directions, so that all counties are provided fair and direct support throughout the state. So, I certainly appreciate all of your efforts. We understand that the vaccine deployment and supporting our constituents is a massive undertaking. And personally, I just want to thank you for all of your work. It's never-ending, and I know you work on the weekends as well, because I have talked to you over the weekend, so I just wanted to throw that out. I'll get you a copy of that letter, and hopefully, we'll get you some relief, especially for the vaccines and financial support.
Thank you Supervisor Bishop. I do want to mention.
Supervisor Angus.
I'm sorry Supervisor Johnson.
Supervisor Angus, other question?
I just want to, I just received something, somebody sent, it was in the paper today in Mojave Valley Daily News, that they're having vaccinations in Laughlin, you brought up Laughlin, that people can come here. But it says it's available just for Laughlin residents, age 70 and above. They have 600 vaccinations a day. I don't know, that would be like, there's not that many people in Laughlin, that was going to go on, it's over 70. So, how come they get to do it when we keep being told it's a federal program and you're not allowed legally to do it?
You know, I can't speak for Nevada and how they've made their decision Supervisor Angus.
So, you're saying it's a state-by-state decision?
Based on?
I always heard it was federal, because it's federal money, so that's why you have to, you have to vaccinate anybody that comes and asks for it? So, I'm going to, I'm going to look into this, because if there's, if they have 600 vaccines a day over at the Aquarius Ballroom for 70 and over, that would help us a lot in Bullhead City.
It would. Absolutely. Yes, no doubt. And we would prefer Clark County and Southern Nevada Health Districts support their residents in their county. That makes sense, and in their district.
Right.
That would be an expectation, no different than us serving Colorado City, Beaver Dam, Littlefield. You've got to reach out to all of these smaller communities at some point to meet their needs.
Okay. Thanks.
Certainly. One challenge that we're facing, and I would like to mention and get residents' assistance on this, is we have a number of individuals, a number of people who are signing up for appointments that are not within the phases. And so, they're showing up, assuming that those providers are going to provide the vaccine, and they're not. They've been instructed to stay with the phase, and that keeps the complaints down from those who are not in the phase, who want to be in the phase. And we need to ensure that that continues. So, we want to encourage people to be, I know patience is in short supply, but to be patient and wait until it's open. And the sooner, you know, the more efficiently we can get people in that 75-plus through the system without delays of people scheduling appointments in their place, the better off Any other questions?
I have a question. Said you have, we have 28,000 plus, 75 and older, and we've done 13,000 shots total. Do we have any idea of those 28,000, how many of those have received shots?
I apologize for that. I actually meant to check on that for you before I came to this meeting, and I had a couple of other meetings that distracted me. So, I will find out from you that percentage.
And then, the other groups that are getting them, have they been taken care of yet, or do we still have thousands of those people that need shots?
I know that on the ADHS website, I did look at their completed series, and we're actually doing pretty well on those individuals that have completed the series. We have 1,772 people that have actually completed and received both vaccinations. So, if that tells you anything about the percentage, we still have a ways to go.
I guess that's it, because I know we had talked before about we might be moving up, you know, the 65 range, but I'm guessing that we're weeks away from getting to 65 to 74.
Yeah. You know, Supervisor Johnson and members of the board, ultimately, you know, when you're trying to prioritize risk factors and look at who's at greatest risk, and balance out also, I know that educators and childcare workers are also looking to be vaccinated, the social side of our work. It's a, there are really difficult decisions that have to be made. And each week, we evaluate the conditions and the number of people, and we try to assess whether or not opening the door to a larger population will serve people better or worse. So, in the, in the end, what we have is trying to stay with the 75-plus a little bit longer, because those are certainly our highest-risk individuals, that and above, and then move on to open it up to the 65-plus and the educators and childcare workers.
Are there any other questions? Does that conclude your report?
Yes, it does.
Steve Robinson signed up to give.
I have one last question, just real fast.
Supervisor Angus.
You know, and my office, we're trying to get, we're helping people sign up because of, you know, especially older people who don't have a lot of times computers, and once it is out there, are we allowed to talk about it?
Sorry.
I'm not talking about provider stuff, but anything that comes from the county.
Yeah. Yes.
Once you send it to us, even though it hasn't been in a press release, I don't want to add to confusion, but, you know, things are moving so fast, and we get, I'm sure all the supervisors get so many questions about it.
Certainly.
Trying to help as many, as many as we can.
Right, right. And we can make it clear, as we send those pieces of information out to board members, if there's any concerns about sharing it, we'll let you know in that email.
That would be great.
And if we don't, then we'll assume that that can all be made public.
That would be very helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Steve Robinson.
Good afternoon. I just, it's almost afternoon. I noticed that the state legislature is going to look at a bill to have all the counties and cities disclose how much of the CARES, what the CARES money was spent for by September 30th. I hope that bill passes, so that people can have an understanding. Secondly, there's a big question about how much reimbursements come to the county for COVID-related deaths. I ask that question because I know of a person personally who was in hospice care from last October through May, or November through May, turned over 90 in that period of time. Her doctor put cause of death, natural causes. Somebody, either in the health department or the coroner's office, changed it to COVID-19 death. And the family argued with whoever it was, whether it was the coroner's office or the health department, and said, "You better put down natural causes, because that's what our doctor said." I heard about another case in our county, and I have the details and the name, but I won't give it publicly because of the privacy issues of the family. But another case where someone was shot in the chest, blowed out the back of his back, and yet it was classified as a COVID death. Now, imagine trying to go to court to say, "This guy was murdered by such-and-such person," but it says, "Oh, no, he died of COVID." This is an issue that the people are really concerned about across our county, and they're wanting some answers, not just in our county. And it's not just a theory or rumor or conspiracy theory. In December, late December, there was on Tucker Carlson, the guest host interviewed someone from Minnesota and from Michigan, who both of them were, had done, their groups had done extensive studies, finding out a lot of cases were being reported as COVID deaths. And CDC themselves admitted that only 6% of all the deaths have no comorbidities. And that's, I'm wanting to, I would think the people would love to know how much of these deaths are really COVID-caused, and how much are natural causes or being shot in the chest. That's my question. I hope we can get some answers to that question, especially the one, who makes that decision? The coroner's office or the health department? Thank you.
All right. Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
Denise, who makes the, who assigns the cause of death to somebody that's passed away?
Supervisor Gould, that would be physicians. Physicians in hospitals, and those physicians at the hospitals, they are responsible for dictating the cause of death.
Who do they report that to?
That would generally be reported to vital records, so that that would be on the death certificate, or a cause of death would be available for the death certificate.
So, is that county or state?
State.
So, that gets reported, the deaths gets reported to the state?
That's correct.
Okay. Do, does the county receive any money for COVID, the number of people that die from COVID in the county?
No.
I did not think that we did. I'm sure there's other people that do, but I don't think that the county government receives a per capita payment.
No, we do not.
Thank, thank you, sir.
No other questions, we'll go on to item number 47, discussion of possible action approved the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution 2021-022. Mr. Elteers.
Mr. Chairman, board members, thank you. This was a late add-on, and thanks for your approval to allow us to get it on the agenda. Congress and the President passed this into law on December 27th. It was posted in the Federal Register on January 8th, and the threshold was changed to 200,000 people, entities that would receive direct funds from the federal government. So, we at Mojave County qualified and were eligible. We had to respond by January 12th. We did this for the record. This is different than any other grant we have received. This goes directly to the people who need it, and this is primarily for rental assistance. It does not involve the enforcement of a governor executive order in any way, shape, or form. And most of all, it's unlike the CARES Act, the money is going into the community and is not going toward community or government expenses. So, this can go either to the tenant or to the landlord. As we were getting ready to come to the Board for, to ratify this item, we were approached by the state of Arizona Department of Economic Security, who recognizes that for seven counties in Arizona to be administering the program independently, it may cause confusion and delay. So, they've offered to administer it at the state level. They have the resources to put toward it. They've already created a portal to facilitate the qualifications and the processing of payments and checks. And it would not cost the county any additional resources. The grant allows for 10% administrative fees. That's what the state is going to charge. We have the, we have the flexibility and the discretion to ask for some of this admin fees and reach out to the rural communities in Arizona that perhaps do not have access to the portal through computer or phone, and get the word out, assist them, have a staff member there with a computer to enter the information. This needs to be, this is good through December 31st of this year, 2021. We initially were told that we would be receiving somewhere around 6.3 million. We initially were told that we would be receiving somewhere around six point three million, and then it was revised upward to six and a half million. So what we have on the agenda for you today is a two-fold request. One is for the board to ratify the county accepting those dollars, and the second is to approve the staff recommendation to pull with the state DES to administer this program because we believe that is the best path forward, and we want to make sure those dollars are delivered where they are needed in the most expeditious way possible. And I thank you for listening to me. I'd be happy to answer any question.
I had some, I was put on as a late item, which I don't agree with, but we're ratifying the application. I don't see the application in the backup.
Supervisor, I know Michael Smith is here and Christine Bridges. I think what, so they can help me answer this. I think what, what we ended up doing is the application was electronic, Supervisor, and there was only one page that we would sign. The chief executive officer of an entity was supposed to sign and could sign, so I did sign that page. But the rest of the application was electronic, and I don't have a copy of it.
And also, we're talking about in the resolution, has determined that it would be in the best interest of the citizens of Mojave County to submit an application to the U.S. Department of the Treasury to seek funding from the emergency rental assistance program. I see that you signed the emergency rental assistance on the nineteenth, which was, would have got our deadline. I also see that on the twenty-fifth, we put into our treasury, six million four hundred fifty-five thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars and ninety cents. Of that, it looks like we put, put five point eight million to rental assistance and we're skimming, what is that, six hundred and forty-five thousand off for administration. In the backup, you covered it a little bit. We're talking about, the state says they will do it, so it'll cost us a dime. We just let them do it. They manage the whole thing. They handle the calls. They get the money out. If we're going to do it, we have to do a website. I'm not sure how we're going to go about taking money out to assist them. Is that something, because I see that nowhere in here. All I see here that we took millions of dollars and we skimmed off our, our portion of it, and now we're talking about letting the state do it. Are we going to give all that money back to the state?
Mr. Chairman, board members, I am not aware of these numbers that you're mentioning. I am aware that we received the funding, that it was deposited in the county treasury, and that ten percent maximum is allowed for administrative purposes, and that the state would use that money just as if we would to administer the program. We are, we are seriously considering asking for a portion of that ten percent, again, just to help the rural communities have access, qualify, and be eligible. One additional item, which is if indeed, so by the way, please allow me to go back one step. Four hundred ninety-two million dollars was allocated to the state of Arizona. Fifty-five percent of that went directly to the state of Arizona to, to utilize. The rest of it went to those entities, counties and cities, that have population of two hundred thousand or more. So we, in a nutshell, by pulling with the state, if our demand is higher than those dollars, that the, the state, depending on the availability, would, would make more available where needed, above and beyond this six and a half million dollars. As far as the deadline, we, we honestly scrambled through this. Like I said, it was posted in early January. We wanted to make sure that we apply for, so our citizens do not miss out on the opportunity. There is a lot of need out there. That is my understanding. Almost every board member has shared concerns about those needs. So as we were getting ready to complete that process and come to the board to ratify, the governor's office reached out to CSA. CSA scheduled that call on Friday, the twenty-first, where we discussed this, this approach. So I, I could and be happy to check the specific breakdown, but what I shared with you were the targets of, of the funding that is being received and, and the amount of it that can go to administering this grant.
Okay. And I don't think the board has any objections to, you know, helping the public. I guess my question would be to Mr. Esplin, the resolution that they want us to ratify, does that say that the county is taking the money, or are we letting the state take the money and, and do it? Because it's, to me, it appears that what says, and authorizes the county departments to accept these funds. So we're talking about accepting the funds here, but then when we're discussing, we're talking about letting the state do it.
So the resolution says that we accept the funds, but I don't have, I don't see any problem with us partnering with the, with the state to go back to the state and say, here, we'll send these monies back to you so that you can then administer the program for us. I don't see how the resolution would stop us from doing that.
But shouldn't that be in front of us if we're doing that?
Well, it's not on the resolution, and if you wish, we can modify the resolution to add that. I will note on the item, the recommended motion is to not only accept the funds, but also the second part, and deliver the letter of intent to the Arizona Department of Economic Security. So you will be voting to, to authorize the county to deliver the letter of intent to AZDES, because right now, we don't have an agreement in front of us. Right now, all they're asking is that by February fifth, that, that the county notify the state of our interest to do this. Once we do that, I assume that then there will be an IGA or a contract presented to us, at which point we'll be able to say, okay, the board will say, yep, we agree to those terms, and we'll go ahead and do that. We may not agree to those terms, at which point then we would keep the money in-house and then we would distribute it accordingly. So we don't, we're not at the stage yet that the, that the state will be taking back our money, so to speak. We're only at the state where we need the board to authorize sending that, submitting that application, that you guys are on board with it, and then the next step will be coming later.
Well, we've already submitted the application. We've already got the money and then the letter. I don't see any letter of intent, but it also says, the letter from the state says, you know, let us know if you want us to handle it. Like the county manager said, if, if they don't, if we don't let them handle it, then we've got to have a website up to get all this done. And that should be immediately here because, you know, the money's sitting in our bank account. People obviously need the help, so.
The idea is that we would have to do it as soon as possible, but the state here is saying, is offering us really a life raft to say, hey, we can do this for you. And that's what we're considering. That's what the county's considering.
Mr. Chairman, yes, indeed, we're really asking the board for authorization to tell the state, yes, we want to pull with you. They have developed a portal. They have, we were told, they have a hundred and forty people reserved to, to process, qualify, and issue payments and so on. The money is supposed to start flowing February fifteenth, and the, the grant is good through December thirty-first. And to Attorney Esplin's point, and forgive me for not mentioning it or including it in the resolution, but yes, there will be an IGA that we will bring back to the board. What we're asking, what we're asking the board for today is really authorization to tell the state, yes, we want to pull with you, and we want you to administer this for us. We will be coming back to the board with an IGA.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Supervisor.
When, when you called me and told me about this, then for people who aren't really understanding this, I'm getting texts from people, what are you talking about? Because it wasn't read. This is a grant to help people who could not pay their rent or mortgages. This is a good program to help people. How I understood it was, the money was going to come to us, and we were going to distribute it because we are closer to the people. So now you're telling me that we're going to allow the state to give it out? Is that what you're saying?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Angus, yes, I did tell you that we were going to do it initially. The more we looked into it and spoke to our staff, and the fact that it is anticipated to be done electronically, we truly came to the rule-
Okay, then why are we taking six hundred thousand?
I, I, I'm sorry. I don't really know anything about taking six hundred thousand. I am aware that only ten percent, maximum ten percent-
Up to ten percent.
Up to ten could be used to administer the, the grant, and that the state would potentially use that, but no higher than that. I'm not aware of this six hundred thousand taken by Mojave County. If indeed, let me back up. I, I do know that the money has been deposited at our treasury, but that's the extent of it. We have not done anything. We can't do anything without the board direction. So I am not sure where that came from.
And from Community Services, do you believe that the state can do a better job amidst all their other things than having it done locally? Where, you know, where we can, people have a little recourse, I mean, try to get through to the state. Would it be done here through them? Like, what would, what would it look like?
Supervisor, we're not going to hand it over to the state without being involved. Our, we're going to focus our role on reaching out and helping people be aware and, and qualify. They have developed a portal. The intent is to make it, you know, make it as efficient as possible. We would have to develop a website, and so people can log on and sign up, and, and we think the state is-
They also had a portal for tests and for vaccinations, and we know how that worked out. But I, I don't know. Now this is like a whole thing. I really, it was such a great thing. It is a great thing. It's a great program. And what would be the quickest way to get this out to people? I mean, again, until I know what the state system would look like, I'm very hesitant on handing it back over to them.
Let me-
What do they take? And they take six hundred thousand, right, of our, you know, six million, six and a half million dollars?
Supervisor Angus, let me just make clear, just a couple of things, just to clarify. There's two parts to this. One is the resolution ratifying the decision to submit the application for the money. The money then came to us. The second part is to issue a letter of intent to the, to the state saying, hey, we're interested in partnering with you, whereby you would then provide the portal. It may not be that money will be exchanged hands. They may just say, okay, we'll do the portal side of it, but then you'll administer the program with them. It's that second part that, that you're looking at is submitting a letter of intent to the state saying, hey, we're interested in partnering.
I understand that.
Look at that. And so we don't know if money will be going back and forth and whatnot. There, there may be, there may be some administration part that we'll have to pay. I don't know. I think the, the IGA will, will be able to spell that out better.
Supervisor Angus, would you be kind enough-
And give me a chance to, as Mr. Chairman, Michael Smith, the Director of Community Services, as well as-
Christine Bridges, who's in the back. Perhaps they can get a little bit more into the details.
Okay, just one more thing, and then I'd love to hear. We have the money here. It's in our account. And you're saying now we have to wait and do it, want to get this money out to the people who need it? That's what it's for?
Supervisor, Mr. Chairman Supervisor Angus, the best way to get the money out is to pull with the state. Believe me, we, we are not in position to, to develop a website and, and-
Do so by February fifteenth. The state has the resources. They have developed the portal.
We, we would be better off and the community better served to focus our effort on helping them qualify.
Okay. So how long do you think this is all going to be before people get the help that this grant was put forward for?
They have the portal, and they have the, the state has the portal and the resources. We are, we are required to notify them by February fifth, whether we are going to pull or not to, to partner. If the board approves it, we'll notify them today and will be, will be engaged in every step of the way. My intent Supervisor, and what they told us, is they, they are ready to issue payments by the middle of February.
Mr. Smith?
Supervisor Johnson, Super, I'm sorry, Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Angus. So in regards to this program, this is a great opportunity, and I'll go through some bullet points of why it's important. And I understand everybody's hesitance with the state and getting things out. I had an opportunity in my past career to work through the, through the Affordable Care Act. I did see those dilemmas. I did see those issues. Those were conversations that, as we went through the process with the state, I made sure to have those conversations when I was on the calls and addressing those issues. One was the portal. I'd like to see the portal. I actually had a chance to go through the portal, watch the portal, experience the portal. The next thing that I asked was, how does this work with smartphones? And then to go through that process and look at that as well. So I had an opportunity to view that as well. When we initially started the program, we were not told that the state would actually run the program. That's when we took the treasury. That's when we reached out. We filled out the application because we knew people are hurting. I've received several emails from supervisors stating the fact that people were looking for rental assistance. This program's a rental assistance as well as a utility assistance. So the importance behind this is to get this out as soon as possible. As a Director of Community Services, I've had an opportunity to pull my team in from the very start, do an evaluation of where our team stood and how we could get the resources out. With that being said, it would be very difficult. Could we do it? Yes, we could do it. Working with my team, I asked for hard facts and deadlines. I didn't want to do it based on assumptions. Those hard facts and baselines or decisions, the soonest we would be able to do it would be the middle of March. There's people hurting right now, right? So we'd be delaying it a month later. Also, the CDC on the twenty-ninth of this month extended Motrin to the thirty-first, March thirty-first, right? So we would only have, our residents and community members would only have fifteen days to get the application filled out and to make it work. Another point that your conversation, Supervisor Angus, in regards to being on the call in our community as well, in regards to rural communities and how that looks, one of the first things that I said, well, one of the first things that I addressed with Michael Weisenhart, who's the Director of DES, was we are a rural county. We are going to have challenges in regards to internet as well as mobile services. So part of my conversation was to say, all right, if that's the case, you know, we want to make sure that our team's ready to go as well. We have three, three different offices. I've advised my team to make sure that we have people in those offices so they are ready to go, understand the application process. This is something that we do on an ongoing basis all the time, right? But with that being said, we want to put, we want to have people use the portal because it'll be faster and it'll be more efficient. And also, we're in a pandemic, right? So we want to be conscious of the people coming to see us, as well as the people providing services. So those are some of the decisions that we made and the directions that we went. So in my opinion, my humble opinion, it's best to go with the state as well as we go through this. We will also, some of the questions that we asked on the call was, will we have management oversight? We will have management oversight. And how will that look? We'll actually get reports and updates almost immediately in regards to how our constituents are, and residents are actually receiving the money and the funding. So if we need to do or make adjustments to work on the campaign, and that's another thing to make sure, is to make sure that our campaign is strong and our marketing work is strong, and really focusing on that, making sure that all the residents of the county hear this, and working through all the different agencies within the county to make sure that this happens.
Thank you. I wish you had spoken first. Now I understand it. Does the money stay here, or does it go?
No. Part of the program works like this. So if we decide to enroll in the state, which is beneficial, right, all the money will go to the state, even the admit money, okay? It's not a lot of money. The six hundred fifty-four thousand dollars, I could pull out the number, but basically, that's the ten percent of the money that was allocated to us for the admin of the program. If we go with the state, we will turn all the funds over that we've received, so, that, that came with this, we will turn all that over to the state. The state will then run the program. However, as Manager Elters had mentioned, we're going to do an IGA, right? So with that, we're also going to put in there that we want to make sure that we have people from the Housing Authority that can go out to the different areas and provide services. So let's say we got to go up to Colorado- So, let's say we got to go up to Colorado City. We'll go up to Colorado City. We got to go to Bullhead. We'll work with different agencies in Bullhead to make sure that we can make that happen. So, bring your documents in. We'll scan them. Some people might just have a phone, might have a flip phone. All right, how do I do this? So, those are some things that we've worked through, and, and that process is, is going to move forward. But right now, it's simply, what we're looking for is to ratify the, the document, because we, the money came in, so we're going to ratify that, that we have that, then we can do that. And then we'll, the next thing is the letter of intent. So, just to turn it over to the state and then figure out where we go from there in regards to the IGA.
And, and you're being told that that money will get out by the middle of February?
That was one of my biggest concerns, and one of the things that I put forth, because people are hurting, and to make sure that that happened. And I wanted a hard date on that, and they definitely said, "We will be ready by the middle of February." So, that was definitely a sticking point.
Well, if you need help down in Bullhead, my office is ready to help with explanation, you know, because I know people are not going to understand how it's done, and so, anything we can do to get information on a regular basis would be great.
Sure, and thank you for that. And that's part of, one of the reasons why, when we looked at the state and there was discussion of going with the state, that I was a proponent of that, because as you read in the documents listed here, if we don't go with the state, we got to create our own website. So, then somebody applies to the state, they hear the state campaign, and they're thinking, "Okay, well, now I can go to the state program and enroll," and they won't be able to enroll. They'll just be directed to our website and then through the process. So, it would make it more complicated. And that was another question that I had for the state. Do you have campaign material ready to go? And they do have campaign material ready to go.
Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michael, we run a housing assistance program now, don't we?
We do, but it's a little different than what we're currently doing, from what this is to what we're currently doing. So, we do VAS vouchers and other vouchers, but those are permanent, right? So, this is a temporary rental assistance program.
So, when Pete, the COVID crisis broke out, people were applying for rental assistance. Who were they applying to?
So, there could have been applying several different community organizations as well, but through Mojave County, that's not exactly what we do for the rental assistance. We have a program for the rental assistance. So, the VAS, the different vouchers, Section 8, we've applied for those, and people are on those programs, but those programs are actually, almost fill the capacity outside of the Kingman Villas.
Supervisor Gold, it may have been organizations like WACOG. WACOG does rental assistance and things. There's other organizations that provide things, and so they may have applied to WACOG and other ones.
Okay. Who, who's going to receive these grants?
So, that's a great question. So, we actually did some research through the American Community Services, which is through the Census Bureau, and those numbers actually came back that there's approximately, per the guidelines of working with the, what the state has put forth for the guidelines, 11,161 people. So, actually, what that means is it'll be 81% of the AMI, so the area of medium income. Those will be the people that will qualify for these grants.
So, they're not going out to people that were specifically affected by the COVID crisis? Bar workers, restaurant workers, those kind of things?
Well, I think they would be included in the group, sir.
So, these are just going to go out to the regular people that normally get welfare, then?
No, because these would be anybody that got unemployment, anybody that has any of these services that would need the, the services of this program.
Interesting. So, who sets the standard on, on this? The Federals or the state?
That's coming from the state at 80% of the AMI, the area median income.
So, when you applied for the grant, did they, whose standards were they, did they say you had to use?
So, that was pretty much a gray area when we were applying for the grants and the fundings. You could, you could go on certain percentages, and the one that the state has used is the 80%.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And if I could also clarify just a couple of things. From what I was reading from the backup and the material, there is criteria that, that Congress passed that says you have to meet these criteria. It was persons who, to apply for rental or utility monies, monies, excuse me, they must meet the following criteria. The person qualifies for unemployment benefits, or has experienced a reduction in household income, incurred significant costs, or experienced a financial hardship due to COVID. Two, the, the person demonstrates a risk of experiencing homelessness or housing instability. And three, the person has a household income at or below 80% of the area median. So, be those, you have to meet those three criteria in order to receive the assistance.
Two of three, or three of three?
You have to meet all three.
So, you had income?
Yeah, yeah, an income, something happened to your income related to COVID, right? Two, a risk of experiencing homelessness or housing instability, and three, the 80% area median.
It's interesting to have number two, because I'm pretty sure, well, I guess you're not going to experience homelessness, because landlords cannot evict their tenants.
Or the risk of experience.
The risk thereof. Thank you.
No further discussion. Do we have a motion, Supervisor Angus?
Just one quick. Thank you, Chairman Johnson. You mentioned that there is going to be some outreach on the Arizona Strip. That's where I have received my notices, so glad to hear that. If there's anything that my district office can do to help, appreciate that. I do have one question, and you may have already covered it. How do you guarantee that these monies, if they're given to a tenant, that they go, that they do get into the hands of the landlord, that they are used for their intended purpose, and there's no abuse?
Sure. So, those will actually be, that was another one of the questions that we had when we were on the phone call. So, it'll be co-endorced, if you want to think of it that way. So, it'll be to the tenant, but it's also then with the landlord in the same sense of that matter.
Great, thanks.
All right, do we have a motion?
Chairman Johnson, I'll make a stab at the motion. I'll make the motion that we ratify the resolution and communicate with the state that we would like to partner with them for administration of the funds.
Have a second. A motion and a second. Real discussion. Hearing on all, favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. My love of call of the public and long meetings. Clerk Anderson has two call of the publics that were sent in that I failed to call on, so I'd like to get them on the record.
The first one was sent in by Sharon Weber, a Kingman resident. She writes, "The passing of the Constitutional Sanctuary County Resolution is a dark mark on our county. The Constitution is the basis for a democratic republic. This document is redundant and was designed to cherry pick certain passages and misrepresent their meaning and intention. The First Amendment and all following amendments were not intended on an individual basis to override the health and safety of the entire populace. That is simply not the case. The initial draft of this resolution was intended to override or resist temporary mandates or orders regarding health and safety measures during the COVID-19 pandemic. The inception, inception of the resolution was based on unfounded conspiracy theories and misinformation on what was claimed to be government overreach. Our governor is most certainly not in the category of those who went to extraordinary lengths by any means to curb the spread of COVID-19. Many of us feel he did way too little. While in the initial surge of the virus, there have been some restrictions that were questionable, those issues have been and are currently being addressed according to law in the state legislature and courts. This resolution is not representative of the general population here in the county. Most residents believe in science and medical knowledge. Most residents would like to feel that those that represent us have our safety and well-being and our rights in mind, as opposed to the demands of a small group of people who refuse to accept their responsibilities as citizens to the general welfare and are unwilling to do even the simplest things to participate in slowing and controlling the spread of a virus that is at its peak in the number of cases and deaths in the county. And as far as small businesses are concerned, the economy will not return to a level of robust success as long as the COVID-19 virus is rampant. That is just common sense. This resolution is not a statement of who we are. It represents a small number of people and a few county supervisors' personal ideologies, not the general public or the constituents who voted for these supervisors. It does not represent the ideology of the entire county nor address the very real public health crisis we are all facing in a helpful way." Sharon Weber. Second one was received from Melissa Wolf, and she writes, "Based on the statistics posted on the county coronavirus response hub, I calculate that 135 Mojave County residents have died of COVID-19 between January 1st and January 28th, 2021, bringing the total COVID-19 deaths to 455. These individuals ranged in age from their 30s to their 90s. Up to this point, some members of the board have used their position to downplay the virus and did not agree expert advice, share their personal views on everything from the efficacy of masks to their fear of vaccines, and have shown a seemingly unwilling, unwillingness to work with the federal government to eradicate COVID-19, which is very concerning to me. I hope the Mojave County Board of Supervisors is wholly committed to work with the new administration on mitigation efforts and vaccine distribution, so that as many of their constituents as possible can return to living their pre-pandemic lives as soon as possible."
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are adjourned.